Day, June 10th, 2025, Kingsport City Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting is now called to order. Dr. Tru, you have a very special guest as a Kennedy Coyote with you tonight, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I do have a fellow Kennedy Coyote we were discussing earlier that I used to teach at Kennedy. So whenever we can hang out with some cool Kennedy kids, and Clara, come on up. It's always a pleasure. This is Clara Robins, and she is going into the second grade at Kennedy, correct? And you were telling me you were having a very busy summer. What are some of the things you've done so far this summer already? About your camps? What sports camps have you been to?
Softball, volleyball, basketball.
So it's been kind of a sports summer so far, but you're getting ready to go on vacation, right? And where did you say you were going on vacation?
Myrtle.
Myrtle Beach, and you're gonna go camping, is that right? What things do you like to do at Myrtle Beach?
Swim, play in the sand, sleep in.
Sleep in, that was my favorite part. If you're going on vacation, you need to sleep in, I agree. Well Clara, thank you for joining us to say the pledge tonight. We're gonna ask everybody if you would please stand, and we will shift this way, and Clara, the flag is right there, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible of liberty and justice for all.
Well, girl, if you need a stowaway to go to Myrtle Beach with you, I like to play in the sand, and I like to swim, and I like to sleep in. So we would have a big time. I hope you have a great rest of your summer, and best to you in the fall at Kennedy. Thank you so much for being here. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the agenda, which includes the consent agenda. Once the agenda is accepted, the board mutually agrees not to discuss any item of business or take any action that has not been accepted for the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So.
Second, if you would cast your vote. Okay, I think everyone's cast their votes, so the agenda has been accepted, and now we will move to recognitions, and Ms. Jamie Jackson will begin.
All right, I've got the privilege to recognize Ms. Lacey Brotherton and Liliana Manjapinto. If you guys would come forward and get your certificates. And, Lacey? Congratulations. Liliana, congratulations. I'd like to say just a few words about the recognition for this evening. They participated in the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network Design Challenge for high school. They were the level winners, and I would like to talk a little bit about the overarching topic. This year, it was on health. They were calling to ensure healthy lives and promote well-being for all ages. Health and well-being are essential for thriving communities, yet many challenges impact the quality of life in Tennessee and beyond. This year's challenge invited students to consider what innovations or new designs might help ensure healthy lives and promote well-being for all ages, and to explore how they could improve their community and environment by examining current trends and practices in the area. I'd like to focus your attention to the backboard. There's a lot more detail in what they were involved in, but in a nutshell, they tackled the problem of mental health and mental health awareness and the stigma that can sometimes surround mental health issues. They developed a school-based nonprofit program called Better Life. It's dedicated to raising awareness about mental health, reducing negative stigmas, and providing support for teens. This is a student-led project, which I thought was a very incredible way to go, and it also makes it so much more approachable. Great idea. They created an interactive website. They had customizable mental health kits, which were real tools that the students could use. They developed club and community partnerships. They were breaking stigmas to build trust and focusing on empowering students, not shaming them. They raised awareness and promoted action. They are encouraging early intervention for middle and high school students, and they have data-driven feedback. So if that doesn't impress you, what these two young ladies have accomplished, I don't know what will. So thank you for caring about our students, and I just want to applaud you. Let's all give the round of applause for this incredible award, the 2025 Award this year. Congratulations.
Our next recognition will be by Dr. Brandon Fletcher.
At this time, the Kingsport City Schools Board of Education is honored to recognize two of Dobbin's Bennett's members of the Dobbin's Bennett Wrestling Team for winning individual state championships. We'd like to recognize Mason Jacob, who won his third individual state title and finished with a record of 40 and 2. With us this afternoon, this is Mr. Noah Watkins. Noah won his first state championship and finished the season with a 38 and 4 record. Dobbin's Bennett's Wrestling Team is led by Coach Wes Idlet and Assistant Coaches Jake Mullins and PJ Rhine. Congratulations.
So what year were you, Noah? Freshman? Oh, wow, that's wonderful. So we've got three more years to enjoy some more state championships, hopefully. Thank you so much. And if there's anyone else who were just attending for the recognitions, you're welcome to leave, or we would love for you to stay. But now is the time when members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda items. If pre-approved by the Board Executive Committee, members of the community may also address the board regarding non-agenda items. In order to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, per Board Policy 1.404, you must submit a written request to the Superintendent of Schools at least three business days before the regular meeting. This is not the time to speak about personnel issues, as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. If you are not sure how to do this, please ask a board member after the meeting. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from a parent or guardian. Speakers are requested to first state your name, and then limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our business items. We will begin with item 5.1, which is the approval of revised random drug testing regulations and procedures. Dr. Andy Tru.
Well, good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share some information with you tonight on the random drug testing regulations and procedures. When we first discussed this a year ago, I think we all anticipated that likely after living with it for a year, we would want to come back and look at these procedures, suggest potentially some tweaks that we have experienced along the way that we thought we might need to address. And what we have for you this evening, I wouldn't say are really substantial changes. I think it's more as we've gone through the year, through a process that actually has gone quite smoothly and really quite well. Mr. Nash will be back next month to do a full report on the drug testing program, providing, you know, information and data and those sorts of things, but we wanted to go ahead and review this this evening, knowing that as athletic teams, for instance, come back in July, we wanted to have these in place and ready for them and not have to go back and kind of midstream in July as folks come back for the year to adjust. So that's why you're getting this piece tonight. And like I say, next month, Mr. Nash will give you kind of a longer report on what's gone on the past year. But we do have a markup copy for you in your packet, and I can kind of walk through what we're suggesting. And these are just some minor revisions, things that we've lived through over the course of the last year. I think what we have tried to do as situations have come up is interpret the existing regulations that we had and deal with situations that we certainly may not have all anticipated that we would have. And we're pretty well covered with that, but as we did that over the course of the past year, we thought there were probably some things that would be good to go in and just kind of codify, for lack of a better way to say it, in the regulations and the procedures so that as we move forward. And I think we would probably look to do this annually again, kind of go through an analysis to see if we need to make adjustments. Some years, we may, some years, we may not. I think the longer we get into this, probably the less we'll need to. I don't think we could ever anticipate every scenario, but having structures in place that will allow us to deal with things as they come. So that was really the spirit behind what's before you this evening, and I could kind of walk through a little bit of some of the individual changes that we've looked at. For instance, on page three, we have taken, I can try and multitask here. That's okay. At the bottom of page three, on item number eight, and the original wording was that any student randomly selected for drug testing who is not in school on the day selected will be tested on the next scheduled testing date. And then if they're absent again, then they would fall to the next testing date. Had some situations that came up that we thought we need to probably consider, the term "who is not in school on the day selected," what does that mean? For instance, if they're on a field trip, or if they're at a work-based learning scenario, those are kind of two different situations. So we've added kind of some bullet points in here that they're not present and available, whether if they're absent from school, if they are at a school-related activity, and our thought on that was field trip, maybe a sports team on a travel scenario, just kind of creating some more specific wording. And then also, kind of, you'll note a bullet there that if they're present but off campus due to an academic-related placement, a work-based learning and internship, that they would be notified to return to campus if they're able to complete testing. "If able" was kind of a phrase there, because we can imagine some scenarios where they might be at a work-based learning scenario where they don't have access to their phone, or they're not able to be reached. So they would kind of come to the next time as well, but again, trying to accommodate for those. An illness confirmed by KCS nursing personnel, what if the child's in the clinic and they're sick? You know, how do we handle that? And then, this was a real-life example, where we had a parent, while the child was in the testing protocol, waiting to go in and test, the parent came to pick them up for medical appointment. So, you know, they're not absent, so how do you handle that? So those are, again, kind of the idea there of making some adjustments. And then if the student is not present and available to test, then they would go automatically to the next testing date. So that's at the bottom of three and top of four. On page five, we have moved a segment, a section in there, about if there is a parent or guardian electing to contest the results. We didn't change the wording of that, but we felt it was better fit in a different part of the procedures. So it's then in the appeal section, we just kind of lift that and move that out there. So just, we had a situation where that was, again, that was a situation where a parent did that, and in our minds, it was a matter of, okay, we think that we are paying for the first one, but we couldn't remember, and then we're looking through the appeal, and it's not there, it's like, okay, let's go back two pages earlier. So we just felt it was in a better place there for everybody, for clarity. Consequences for a positive result. There are multiple places where it talked about as a consequence, a suspension from voluntary extracurricular activities for a period of 14 days. From when? So, again, providing some clarity on that as far as what is the date when the clock starts? And so in looking at that, there's a pretty consistent in the drug screening results, the date that the medical review officer verifies the positive result. So we thought because of the consistency of that, that would then become the date, and so that has become then under the consequence section, where you'll find on pages, on page six is where that shows up. It's, you know, a first positive, 14 days from the date of the positive result, and then we put in the top of that, for the sake of the procedures, that is the date, it's verified by the medical review officer.
Just to make sure I understand, you're saying that there is a consistency from the date of the positive test to when it's verified by the medical, the officer?
The report we get back on a positive result all has a medical review officer verified date. And so because that date is consistent, every positive result has that date, we felt that was the most consistent way to say, we'll start the clock when it's verified. Again, situation where Mr. Nash may go into this more next month, but, you know, the notification to the family, they may know before we do, based on just the flow of information, because the initial communication goes from Ballad to the family. And so the family may know earlier, but again, when does the clock start? When they're notified, when we're notified? We just thought, across the board, the verification from the medical review officer was the most consistent way to start the clock.
Are you able to see on those reports the date of testing and the date of the verification?
Correct.
So what you're saying is it's consistent, like if it's 24 hours, it's not 24 hours this time and a week later the next time? You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying. That's not what I'm meaning by consistent. There is a level of consistency on that as far as test date to the date that it's verified. Typically, it's two to three days from the date that it's tested. My meaning of, and apologies if I'm not clear in that, of consistency is that every positive result has a verified date. That it's verified by the medical review officer. And so rather than saying it's when the parent notifies us, or when test is, or certain things, we thought, let's just go by the date the medical review officer verifies the positive. That seems a logical place to start the clock on any consequence.
That versus the date of the actual test?
Correct. Because of, again, when they test, they're not positive theoretically. They're not technically positive until the medical review officer verifies the positive test.
And there are often, there could be events between that tested date and the verification date that we just don't, we just don't know the status.
Okay. I have another question, and it is, and this is just nomenclature. I'm confused as to why sometimes it's called a non-negative and sometimes it's called positive. So I know it's the same thing, so why don't we just say the same thing throughout?
I think as we crafted the procedures, the difference between a non-negative and a positive, a positive is when it's actually, in our minds and the procedures, when it's confirmed by the medical review officer. That's when it's technically, we would consider positive. It's non-negative when, because of all the checks and balances that go in between when it's first identified to that verification. So that's why I think it's been, and that came from the nomenclature from Ballad, as we've kind of worked through the initial processes. So that's kind of was the thinking. We can certainly go back and make revisions to that if you think it would be easier to clarify that.
I think when you say, when you use a double negative like that, I think that's typically confusing. And so a non-negative, I'm like, is that good or bad? In my head, I'm thinking, is that good or bad? Negative or positive, it's pretty clear.
A non-negative result also, I would say, would be, for instance, based on our understanding of, in working with Ballad and at the procedures, if it would be a medication-induced result.
Okay.
That would be considered non-negative.
Okay, but not positive?
Correct, until it's verified.
Positive for the substance, but there's a justification for the presence of the substance.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Under a non-negative.
Correct, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, so you'd have perhaps, it would show up as, you know, the substance is present, and then during that review period, the person would be able to authenticate, I have, you know, prescription or some other reason for having it, or, you know, this is within therapeutic limits, because even with a prescription, it still might not be a non-negative because the individual exceeded a therapeutic threshold. So that's kind of, it is confusing, it's a non-negative, or it's a double negative, but the substance is there, hence that it's, you know, not negative, but it's not a violation of the policy.
Would that also include situations where it's testing abnormalities, like it's too diluted, or the temperature isn't correct, and it comes back as a non-negative because it's not a truly negative, it's there's a problem with the testing?
The adulterations are going to be a positive, I think.
It's in, that's in there.
That's in there.
If there's an adulterated sample, it's automatically considered a positive.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. One other, again, this was on page seven, as we kind of lived through this for the course of the year, and we did not have this particular situation, but I think every time we went through a process, Mr. Nash and I would, what if? And try to kind of think through scenarios, and, you know, what if a child, a student who was in a mandatory participation in a testing cycle, you know, you got to do the next three, for instance, what if they withdraw? What do we do? How is that handled? So just to clarifying that, and our recommendation is that, again, to clarify, if I am required to take the next three and I withdraw after one, should I return, I would pick back up where I left off and be required to test for two more times. And so clarifying that in there as well. I'm sure there, again, we've tried to what-if a lot of these things, and just to almost test our procedures to see if those what-ifs can be interpreted under the banner of the current regulations and procedures, that's why we tweaked a little bit. I think, again, we'll, as we move forward in time, continue to do that and potentially need to make revisions. This is what we bring to you this month, this time in the summer, for your consideration for approval for the 25, 26 year.
Refresh my memory, do participants have to complete this form every year?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
So every year, it must be on file before they can
Correct.
Participate as of July 1?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. To only have those minor changes is a tribute to the work that went in on the front end, so thank you very much for that.
Let me say, it was an exceptional year for, in many ways, for this process, but especially in the way it was administered, not only from Ballad as our partner, but with Dr. Tru and Mr. Nash and the cooperation of the schools involved, really exceeded expectations throughout. So excellent, and I appreciate, we'll thank the board for elevating it and allowing us to get this through, and a year later, I think that we can all say we're pleased that we did.
Mr. Nash is looking forward to sharing information with you next month, and all credit to him for driving this process forward.
Wonderful. Okay, well, if there is no other discussion, then the recommended action is to approve proposed revisions to the Kingsport City Schools Random Drug Testing Regulations and Procedures for the 2025, 2026 school year. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Cast your vote. I think all the votes have been cast. Okay, so motion is approved. Thank you very much, Dr. Tru. We will move on to item 5.2, which is the approval of the revised Kingsport City Schools Fiscal Year 2025, 2026 Budget. Mr. David Frye.
Good evening. We have for you tonight a revision that we'll ask you to consider to the budget that you approved back in May. I updated a couple of slides in the presentation that I gave to you back in May. So if you want to just go on down to like slide 16, the rest of the presentation, if you want me to go through the whole presentation, I'll be more than happy to spend about 30, 45 minutes doing that.
No, thanks for us.
So on this particular slide here, so basically, the budget that the board approved back in May, it was, the budget total that we're recommending tonight has not changed. The general purpose budget is still $105,2,300. That has not changed. What has changed is the funding for that budget. Included in the estimated revenue for that budget was an increase in funding from the city of Kingsport of $1 million. The transfer for operations proposed was $12,245,300. That was presented to the Board of Mayor and Altmann, and that was not approved. They kept the funding at the $11,245,300. So there wasn't, they didn't approve an increase in their funding for our budget. So that left us with having to figure out how we're going to fund that $1 million. At this point, we didn't, we have a fairly healthy fund balance. Now, it's not a good budget practice to fund your operating budget and recurring expenses out of your fund balance. We were already taking about $2 million out of our fund balance. A million dollars for just regular operations, there was another $600,000 or so for the classified bonus, and then there was another $300,000 that we added to fund some special education expenses. So that was roughly about $2 million. So what we've got now is the $631,000 for the bonus is still there, the $300,000 for the special ed program is still there, but now we're asking to take, instead of $1,072,400, it's $2,072,400 out of our fund balance. I put a slide in that basically is the same information that I gave you in the financial update that we did at that same meeting, telling you that at June 30th of '24, our fund balance was about $13.5 million. We've appropriated about $5.5 million out of that fund balance since that time. With money that we know that we've got saved in our budget, because we funded about, what, $1,485,000 of expenses that we had budgeted, that we funded with leftover ESAR money, so we know that we're going to be under budget by those expenses. I'm also projecting that we'll probably have a surplus, other than that, of about $1 million. So it started with our fund balance and what we've taken out, and then what we should end up with in operations. That would get us to a end-of-the-year fund balance of about $10,440,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. So if we take out about another $3 million to fund this, to fund this budget, then that's going to get our projected fund balance at $7,442,060. Now, that's a projected amount. The $1 million that I'm projecting as a surplus, that's, you know, that's a variable. I know that Dr. Hampton received some information earlier this week, or maybe it was late last week, about some sales tax adjustments that are going to be coming in, that we now know that our sales tax that our sales tax collections for the next couple of months are going to be lower than what they would have been. So that $1 million may be affected by that. But anyway, if we, if we ended the budget, if we started out next year with a fund balance of about $7.4 million, that's about a 7% fund balance compared to our total budget. Seven, $7.4 million out of the $105 million operating budget is roughly 7%. I'd rather it be higher than that. I think I'm going to change my number to 10% now instead of 5%.
What you feel comfortable with?
It just feels better. But anyway, we know that there's the 3% fund balance rule that, that the State Department of Education lives by. And they, and you can't appropriate money from your fund balance to balance your budget if it goes, if it takes it below 3%. So that's what the fund balance rule is. Our fund balance will be at 7%. So we're not in any danger of not, of not meeting that, that guideline. So, so that, that's the revision to the budget. So it's, so I'd ask you to, to approve a revised budget, the same dollar amount, but the, the amount of funding has, has shifted from a $1 million addition from the city of Kingsport to now roughly about a $3 million appropriation from our fund balance.
Any questions for Mr. Frye? Okay, hearing none. Then the recommended action is to approve the amended Kingsport City Schools Fiscal Year 2025, 2026 Budget. Is there a motion for approval?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, if you would cast your vote. Okay, I think the votes have been cast, and that is, that has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that concludes the business portion of our meeting. We will not be having a work session this month. So I thought we might take just a minute or two and review any committee meetings that someone has attended or any reporting that you might have. I will mention the fact that we will be, in our next business meeting in July, we will be reviewing Dr. Hampton's contract. We looked at his evaluation, very positive evaluation, at our last meeting. And so we will look at the superintendent contract at our next voting meeting and be able to do that. So we, we are very pleased with your work and the people who are working with you and looking forward to you seeing results. You've given us a teaser or two about positive results, so we're very excited about that. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hampton and let him kind of brief us here while we're all together.
I'll, I'll be very brief this evening. We've, we've wrapped up the 24, 25 school year and are well into our summer camps, academic camps, some athletic programming going on. Things are, are going incredibly well. And so kudos and thanks to everyone who has been a part of that planning process. We do have, as Ms. Woods indicated, some initial data back from our spring testing. That information is embargoed, as it always is. But I can tell you, I can't say enough to say, there are some very impressive gains at every level and at every course K5 consistently in the other grades, and some astronomical gains on the parts of, on the part of some schools at certain grade levels. And so it will be a celebratory data reporting period when we get to the point when we can share that information out. And that all goes to, goes back to committed educators, impassioned leaders, and invested students and families. And so all of those ingredients are a part of what we're doing. We're probably going to be a bit louder and prouder in the coming year about our successes to demonstrate to our funding body and to the county commission why it is that they should invest in, in our product, because it speaks for itself. But when it doesn't speak for itself, we'll be speaking for it. So that will be, that will be upcoming for us. So very excited about that. One more thing I'll mention is that, that million dollar appropriation and reappropriation was a hard pill to swallow. Most of the school systems in Northeast Tennessee are struggling with their budgets, as are the counties and municipalities. These seem to be challenging financial times, so I, I understand and respect that. But we are going to, we are in the process of creating, you all have seen what we call is a fast fax document, which is generally a one pager that explains information about a certain topic. And this topic will, will be focused on our budget, and it will focus on the decision at the county commission level, the vote that led to the $3.7 million decrease in our budget. But as important as it was, $8.8 million, if you look at all three school systems in Sullivan County. And so we're going to put that packet, we're going to put that document together. Behind it, perhaps some other information that, that informed citizens would want to have about voting processes and what people might want to do if they want to throw their hat in to be considered for, to run for an office, that if there were to be people who were to be strong advocates for education and concerned about perhaps how the funding has trended for Sullivan County, Bristol, and Kingsport schools, that perhaps they throw their hat in the ring and have, have become a voting advocate as next year's an election year. And so we're going to be pretty vocal about this topic. Once we get a finalized product, I intend on sharing it with our booster organizations, our parent groups, our school level, our educators, our school level staff, all of our commissioners and BMA members, those who represent Kingsport and those who represent non-Kingsport areas of, of Sullivan County, just to show very clearly in black and white what we've lost. Not requesting back pay, we're just asking for them to make it right over, as quickly as possible. Because the results we're seeing come from a level of funding that we have backed on our fund balance, that we have supported on our fund balance. We haven't cut. We didn't cut for next year because it wouldn't have been the right thing to do in the last weeks of May, heading into the summer and the school year with our, whether it be faculty or whether it be programming. What we will have to start doing in July is looking at our budget and asking, where can a million plus dollars, probably $1.5 million, where can it come from? There's only so much you can cut when it comes to travel and professional learning and the contributions, the limited contributions we make to performing arts and athletics. To get to $1.5 million, you have to start looking at people. And people, those are the resources that make the difference in the gains and the outcomes that we've been able to accomplish over the last three years. So, you know, we'll have data to back it, we'll have facts to support it, and we're going to, we're going to use our voices and our votes to send the message that, you know, Kingsport students and Kingsport City Schools need and warrant and should be funded at the level that, that we were previously. So that, that's, that's all forthcoming.
And so just a reminder for our listening audience, there are 24 county commissioners, and of those, 13 of the 24 actually affect Kingsport City proper in some form or fashion. And so unfortunately, the last vote a couple of years ago to decrease the funding was 21 to 0. So every commissioner voted against, or voted to, for reducing the percentage of property taxes that would go toward education. So that affected us, it affected Sullivan County schools, it affected Bristol City schools. And so it, it really, those decisions really make a difference. And so I encourage you to reach out to your commissioner or to all commissioners. And I encourage you to consider, you know, if you feel that being called and being led to run for one of those positions and you support education and think it's important, that, that you would, that you would just investigate what that might look like. Thank you, Dr. Hampton, and for the people who are putting together that information. We appreciate that. It is a lot of work. There will be some additional commission meetings coming up that the budget has not been finalized. And, you know, in order to continue to produce a quality product, we just can't continue to ask our people to do more with less. And we want to educate the entire student, not just the academic side. We all know students who are coming to school every day because of extracurricular activities, because that is the glue that holds them to education. And so I would really hate to see us start to have to cut funding for programs, athletics, performing arts. I mean, we have national champions, we have state champions, we have international competitors. I can't imagine us having to, to cut those types of programs. And so it makes, it makes my voice quiver. It makes me so sad. So we, we need to, we really need to make our voice heard. And I encourage our listening audience, and those who might read about this in the paper tomorrow, to reach out to your commissioners should you have questions. You're always more than, we're more than happy to field questions. You may contact the central office, and we'll try to get information to you. But this is a situation that's hurting all schools, and, and we hope it can be remedied. Okay, if there are no other items to be discussed, then I think we've covered everything. Our upcoming meetings, just a quick review. July 8th, 2025, we'll have our regular business meeting. Then some of us will be traveling to the TSBA Summer Law Institute in Gatleburg, July 18th and 19th. And then on the 22nd, we'll have our work session. And if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around the 29th is convocation. So we will welcome new teachers, new educators in prior to that. And then all of our KCS family of educators will be back there on the 28th, I do believe. And in the dome, in the dome. So that will be, no, no, not in the dome. Toia Fried, Toia Fried. We'll go back to Toia Fried, okay? But we can do other things in the dome, so we'll have, yeah. We're very grateful to have that facility, for sure. So we wish our families a very safe and restful summer, and, and we will look forward. It, it'll be here before we know it, but we're going to try to have some R and R before that happens. No problem. Okay? With that, we are adjourned. Roll tribe.